So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:15, 6:16, no, it's just 18 still. So Julia, is it your remote if you would just like to tell us, go down the checklist, your name, your location, and that we're, if you're alone or not, and then we'll call on you for your vote when we vote.
Julia Killily, I'm in Avon, Connecticut, and I am alone.
Thank you. Alright, so for the minutes, rather than accept these two as a group, because we're doing the, approving the unsealed non-public minutes of March, and Gina would have to abstain, so it's just easier to do them separate. So I'd like a motion to accept the non-public minutes of March 9.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion or corrections? Alright, so all those in favor of approving those minutes as presented, say aye.
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 And United States, and then just need a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of April 13.
Can we separate those? Because I have corrections for the non-public minutes, and I think the corrections need to be discussed in non-public, and then be, then approved in public. You know what I mean?
I think so. Okay, so, okay, so just need a motion to accept the public minutes of April 13.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion or corrections to the public minutes of April 13?
Yep, I have a couple.
Yeah.
So on the, on page, well, page two of the minutes, MOU, Shared Human Resources, when I was talking about the MOU, it says allowing enough time for individuals to be trained, it was more of like acclamation because of this, the two entities, the town and the school. So it wasn't, it was more, the conversation was more of a, you know, how's it gonna shake loose, acclimating, getting used to more sort of actual training, although training was included.
Do you have a suggestion on how you'd like it to read?
Enough time for the individual to become acclimated. What do you find by me? I mean, you can specify, you can specify to become acclimated to the two, to both school and town duties. Would actually be even more specific.
Alright, do you got that, Maria?
Yeah.
Then on page three, when we talked about moving the review of the SAU employees manual, this is noted as a 4-0-0 vote, but I had voted against, so it should be 3-1-0.
Okay.
Bear with me one second while I go through. And that's all I got.
Does anybody else have any corrections? Oh, actually, I think you weren't there, so you probably don't. Unless you have a spelling correction or something.
No, all good, thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the public minutes of April 13th as amended, say aye.
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 And, okay, so the non-public minutes of April 13th, you have a correction, but you want to make the correction in non-public.
Well, they're non-public minutes, and it's discussing personnel, that's a clarification on a vote. So I feel like that should, the clarification or the correction should be made in non-public, and then, once the correction is made, then accept in.
As we come back, does that make sense? Okay.
Alright, so we need to move that to after the non-public.
Okay, so we, okay, so we'll keep track of that, move that to April 13.
Sorry to make that complicated.
No, that's okay, just needed to talk it through a little bit.
Yep.
Alrighty. Okay, so moving on, update on COVID.
So we have four active cases after about a month of no active cases in the district. We have two at the elementary school and two at the middle high school. If you look at Cheshire County, it's 10.8% positivity right now with 328 over the past 14 days. Statewide, we're up about three times over the past month, so the numbers are going up. There's a sense that we're, in the fall, we're likely going to see another surge. There is a, two sub-variants of the Omicron variant in South Africa right now, the BA4, BA5, and they've, their population is about 90% either vaccinated or had Omicron verified, and there's still surge with these variants, but doesn't translate to hospitalization surge, so it's just, just a little more contagious than previous variants, but maybe not more deadly. So that's, that's the COVID thing. We are experiencing a stomach bug in at least the middle high school. I don't know about the elementary school. That seems to be circulating, so. I don't know if it works with stomach bugs, but.
Oh, boy. Yeah. Alright, does anybody have any questions for Wayne?
I have, I have one. It's, it's more SRA related than COVID, so I could do it at the superintendent's report, if that makes more sense. Because, because we, yeah, but we have SRA conversations with, right, with your, so I can move it, I'll move it, yeah, I'll move it.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Wayne on the COVID item? Great, thanks, Julie. Alright, thank you. Next up was board goal setting, so, you know, we've done it a couple of different timeframes in the past. We've done it in the fall, we've done it in June, our last, the last like two years or so, we've done it in June. So I was talking to Wayne, and was kind of throwing out there that this year, rather than do it in June, since we have, you know, the board will, sometimes the board does it alone, and sometimes we meet with the administrative team. So we meet with the administrative team, we have several new administrators coming along, so it would make more sense, rather than do it in June, to wait and do it in July or August, when, you know, the new folks are here. So, um, so we were thinking of proposing a date in, in July. You know, this was just our thought, see what everybody thinks, July 20th, if that works, it's a Wednesday. I believe it's a Wednesday, it's always a Wednesday.
I have another meeting on that, on that third Wednesday of the month.
Oh, yeah, you're right. No, so, what about that? So, um, I mean, we could do it some other, I know the 13th isn't a good day for some, but we could do it a different day that week, if you guys think, or I know the first week with the holiday, we don't want to do it then. So what does everybody think? I mean, we could also wait till August if you want, but that's pushing it.
I don't want to wait till August.
Yeah, that's pushing it off.
I'm flexible, so why you just tell them to shut up?
Yeah, I'm flexible, except for, thank you Gina, reminding me about that, the 20th. So, what do you think? I have nothing else, that whole week, what do you guys think?
The week of, the week of the 18th, I've got planning board on the 19th, I got, well, obviously, selected meeting is the 18th.
But, but is it, because what's their?
That's right, that's right. And I don't, I don't have the summer schedule, sorry.
I mean, we could give me just one selection.
But I'm not going to do it on Monday anyway, because it's, it's my busiest day at work, so I won't do it on Monday.
I don't have a problem if we did it, like, the 13th.
I know that, it doesn't work for some of the admin.
Okay.
Well, are we meeting ourselves first, and then meeting with them?
Um, we could, we could, in the past, so.
Yeah, I like having our own meeting first, and then, and then doing the group meeting, it's my preference, but I'll defer to the group.
Julia, what do you think?
Well, for me personally, Mondays and Thursdays are better days for meetings than Wednesday, but I can certainly be flexible, as long as, if need be, I have to be remote.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And Thursday is actually my best day.
Thursday works.
No, I know.
21st, then?
Well, I know Thursday is not great for Wayne, but in the summer, can you let him move some stuff around?
In the summer.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could do the 21st, we could, or the 14th.
Either one.
Either one. What works best for the board to meet? Because we would want the board to meet first.
And then go in here, and then no, yeah, we could stay up there.
Yeah, because you guys said the 21st is good for you guys to meet, like, maybe with the admins?
Are you talking meeting first, and then with the admins on the same night, or two different meetings?
Two different meetings. That's what Sean has proposed. Like I said, we've done it several different ways in the past, so, you know, where we've met just, just the board, and not the board and the admins, and the board and the admins on one night, or the board on the one night, and the admin and the board on another night, so. So it will be, what's being proposed right now is two meetings, one with the board and Wayne, to get our pieces together, and then one with the board and the admin. I guess once they see our pieces, and then they can bring their pieces, and we can make them all work happily. So the 14th and the 21st, does that sound good for, for you guys? It'd be too short for me, I would think.
Yeah, promises, promises.
I know.
The last time we met was just the board for goal setting, I think it was a marathon session.
Yeah, when it was just the board, last year or the year before, it was like till 11 o'clock, it was crazy.
It was, it was an 11 o'clock.
Always some other stuff going on, but, yeah, you're right. But it won't be that, I promise. You can hold it, it's on tape now.
Yeah.
What were you doing?
I won't let that happen, Julia. I'll get us out of there.
She will. Alright, so how does that, and if you guys want to check your, the admins for the 21st, if you want to check your calendars and get back, because we could tentatively do that second meeting on the 21st, and. Look at Anne's life.
There are a few people here, doesn't matter.
That works for me.
So we can do our goal setting on the 14th?
Yeah, so the board and Wayne on the 14th, what works for you guys, 6:15, 6, 6?
That's fine.
Is 6 okay for you guys?
Yeah, 6 is fine. We were doing 6:15 for jam, right?
Exactly.
It's actually better for me, usually.
Yeah, I mean, I, what's your guys' timeframe? I could do 5:30.
Oh, I, I think, I think 6 would be better.
Okay, and then tentatively, we could put the board and the admin on the 21st, and, you know, just. Get, Wayne, if you can just corral everybody, and fill their calendars, and let me know, and I can pass it on. Okay, and then, I know it's a ways out, but if anybody has any, you know, ideas, any thoughts, you know, just be thinking about it.
I already have mine all drawn up.
Yeah, Sean has already sent me stuff.
It's 6 o'clock on the 21st.
Yes, it's on the 21st, too. Great.
Alright, all in.
Thank you, guys. Next, the superintendent's search, Anne has sent us some information via email this afternoon, so I would like to, based on this, this information via email, I would like to go over that in non-public. Just because of the nature of what some of the discussion is in the email. So if we can move superintendent's search to non-public, will you guys agree with that?
If we're making any decisions on what we're doing, that goes, that's made in public.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think we will be. That wasn't my, I didn't anticipate we would tonight, but, yeah, but yeah, that is a good point. Alright, next up, MOU for the shared human resources position. The committee is still waiting to hear back from Matt up and on some of this, so we would like to table this until next month. Is that okay with all of you, to table that till next month, since we don't really have any more information, till we get some questions answered by Matt?
Yeah, the piece that we needed, we haven't been able to get the answer to, so.
Yeah. So.
Motion to table?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table.
Hi.
Any ready for the discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor tabling that till June, say aye. Julia?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, next up, it's the SAU manual. I do have, like, some questions. I requested that we move it till this month, so we would have time to go through, you know, because I don't have the formatting, we couldn't do the strike throughs and the highlighting, so I wanted to go through it and compare it to the current one. So I do have maybe about 10 questions, so just bear with me, and Anne, and I know Sean had helped on it, so. Hope, you know, hopefully you guys can answer some of these, and then we'll see if anybody else has any questions. We just, let here. Okay, so on page 13, there's a, you know, list of employees that's covered under the manual, and then on the backside, on page 14, a list of employees that are included in the tiered system of raises. And the tiered system of raises has 37 positions listed, and the employees covered under this manual only have 33. And I was thinking they should be the same, but then I went through and looked, and some of them are, like, the combined kind of thing, like the, on one of them, and the job description says principal, and it's both schools, and so. So I think that's okay, but I do have a question on page 13, under non-exempt. We have the administrative assistants at the middle high school and the elementary school. What about the receptionist at the middle high school? Are you sure? I didn't. Okay, I'll double, I'll go, okay, cool, I'll double check that, because I, I wasn't sure. I have, you know. No, that's fine. I'll take your word for it, and I'll check it out. But, uh, because I do have a copy, I just didn't think we had any of those positions in there, but receptionist might have been the one that we left in.
Left in where? I didn't hear what Anne said.
Yeah, Anne said that that position, the receptionist position, is in the support staff, CBA.
Okay.
So, and I'll check that out. I just hadn't, I had thought we had, several years ago, back when Dr. Seawest was still here, that we had removed all those types, but receptionists might have stayed in. Um, and then on page 14, the assistant under non-exempt employees, the very first one, the assistant to SAU office. What position is that? Because, okay, so, because I don't see that under employees covered in this manual. I know there was one that said, like, business office special, something, and I knew that was Shirley, so.
No, that's not Shirley.
Okay, alright, so then that needs to be added over on page 13. Okay, so, so that needs to be added, the assistant to the SAU office. Yeah, I went back and forth with who was who on that one. Um, on page 15, and you know, and this one might be, I just, just don't remember, and it might be a case of going back to see when we approved this. But when the summer hours, on the very top of page 15, it says the standard work week during the summer is 35 hours, because there's Fridays I take it are less, and I just don't remember, because people are salaried at 40 hours, so if people are working five less hours, is page 15.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, so if people are working five less hours for eight weeks in the summer, but getting paid all year like they're working 40, that comes to a nice chunk of change, that, you know what I mean? Just looking at it from the zero-based budgeting, and the, you know, budget committee, you know, rep. So I just don't remember, and, you know, I've been on the board a long time, so it's very possible we approved it at some point, and I just don't remember, but when did we approve going to 35 hours a week in the summer? I don't remember that happening.
It's been that way, it was that way in the CBA, it's been that way. Right along.
Alright, so that might be something, just when we do the zero-based budgeting, I didn't see my point, because this, just, I mean, I did complete math, and just an average of just one group who are like under, between 75 and 100,000, that's about like $13,000, so that people are getting paid for, and they're not salaried at that much. So that might be something, just, just to look at when we do zero-based budgeting. Um, oh, the next page, page 16. Um, so under holidays, and I only know this because, because my office added another holiday, because it's a new federal holiday. So Juneteenth is now a new federal holiday, June 19th. So, and I know, like, we're off, I mean, it's a weekday weekend this year, but we're off the next day, and I imagine the post office is probably closed, right?
We just got it, yeah.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we just got it for this year.
The state of New Hampshire does not recognize Juneteenth as a paid holiday. All state offices and all will be open, and it is not a paid holiday according to the state of New Hampshire. We went through this at the 18th meeting last week.
Okay.
In the state of Vermont, it is, it is, it has been declared a holiday, but not in the state of New Hampshire.
Kind of like how Martin Luther King Day, over the years, that evolved.
Well, it's kind of like Columbus Day. Columbus Day is a federal holiday, but it's not recognized by the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah, that's how I have it off, but the teachers, you know, my, yeah, okay. Alright, no, I don't need, I trust, trust you, I don't need to see proof, or just, you know, just, you know.
Yeah, we, we had this discussion, Patty brought it up, because of the diversity committee, this is the information that we had.
Alright, um, page 17, the bottom there, where if we have, they can accumulate six days up to 125, and the previous manual, it was 120, I understand 125 is probably to make it current with the teachers, or, you know, equal with the teacher's contract, but is that something that, I mean, I understand if we approve this, then we are approving it, but is that something that we should, what do you guys feel, should there be discussion? It just feels like it's kind of was obviously updated in there, but the board never discussed that. Or maybe it's not a big deal.
Is that the rationale, that it's mirroring the teachers?
Yeah, that's what, that's what you and I discussed, Sean.
Yeah, but.
Remember, when we, we did talk about this.
We may have, I remember, because I remember going back and forth on, like, the strike through and stuff.
Right.
But, but, and I, like I said, that was my thing to not do it. I don't remember it specifically, but we may have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I assume, because it's the same as the teacher contract, but.
You'll see, through out here, we tried to hear more stuff to the teacher's contract, so there wasn't too, like, health insurance and all that, so we feel that they would be following the teacher's contract, so it'd be easier to update this when that happens, the teacher's contract.
I mean, my personal opinion, I don't know, the board can discuss, obviously, but, you know, and I understand the insurance, because that's a bigger piece, and more people get in on it, and you get better rates and whatever, but their union, and they negotiate it, so for a non, a non-union group to get all the same benefits that the union group is getting, without having gone through negotiations, just to make things equal, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with that, but I'm only one person, so.
I also talked to Jean Snow about this, and this has been past practice.
That, that.
That the, which SAU employees.
Well, it hasn't.
I'm just, that's what it was, I don't know how, when, but it was, it has been past practice, and I think Jody and I talked.
So the past practice has not been to do what's been in the manual, then, because the manual is 120.
I apologize, I can't really speak to manuals, I had not really seen it before, but I do know that we've been doing the 125.
Alright, so they've been getting for a decade, five more days.
I couldn't speak to how long it's been going on, however long. But I would, I would go with what Jean Snow said, because she would have been the person.
Alright, so that's just my opinion. I don't know, if you feel it's worth discussion, or we just want to change it, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it up, because I noticed it.
Just have a quick comment. And it's not going to change anything, but I think it's important for me to say my piece on it. From a business standpoint, I was very, very surprised to see 15 sick days, and on top of 15 PTO days for people that have been there for 10 years. That's six weeks of vacation is, of time off. I know PTO is technically, I mean, sick time is technically sick time, but I was very surprised for that, it seems extremely generous.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it's incredibly generous.
I mean, from a business standpoint, that is very, very expensive.
Exactly, oh, absolutely, and with, I can understand the union, because you negotiated, that's a whole separate thing. For a non-negotiated group to be getting that kind of number of days, yeah, I agree with you, but.
I understand it's not a change, I just wanted to make my point, that it feels to me that it's extremely generous and expensive to offer 15 sick days on top of 15 PTO days.
Yeah, and, and that you can carry over sick days. I know in my, now we switch to PTO, but everything's PTO, but when it used to be sick days, you use them or lose them, and we only got five.
Yeah, and that most places don't distinguish between sick days and PTO anymore, that's a bit, that's very outdated, for, at least in the corporate world. Generally, it's just, this is your number of days to use for whatever, and there is no distinction, and part of the reason for that is the carryover, that, because technically, I mean, I'm assuming we do, but on our books, on our financials, all that carryover, sick time, needs to be counted as a liability.
Yeah.
So, to truly account for it in our budget, in our finances, all that carryover is a liability, it needs to show in our books. So that's a primary reason where the corporate world has switched to just PTO and no carryover, because of, you know, 125 days is a lot of money for how many people.
Yeah, and especially in highly paid positions, if you really get up there, so. I don't know. So, it was just, like I said, I'm just looking at changes, so, alright.
So, and we do let them still carry vacation days, too, which is also uncommon, maybe in the education world, not, but, that's also.
And the federal government, I, you don't even want to know how much to tell.
No, we don't, because Sean and I have talked about this.
Yeah, I don't know.
I get a lot.
I don't.
Have to earn it, but I get it.
Yeah, so. It's a benefit.
Yeah.
So, it's a benefit.
Yeah.
The, on the bottom.
It makes the job attractive, attractive.
The one question I have here talks about the 125 days, then it says there will be no carryover of days once you reach the 120. So is that, is that just like?
Just needs to be changed. Yeah.
So it should be 125.
Yeah, at the very last. Alright.
I just wanted to point out that we, you have a, no more than 10 vacation days can be carried over, so there is a limit to that, Julia.
Oh, understood, understood, it's just.
It's still a lot. Alright, and then, I mean, like I said, just looking at it, making it equal with the, with the bargaining unit, kind of struck out to me that you're not bargaining, but.
Do you want to make a decision on it?
No, no, I don't think so. It looks, it looks like Julie and I are in the minority, just by judging from faces, so I'm fine. Just ask.
I wasn't suggesting that we could make a plan, a plan, there seems often the answer is, it's the way it's always been, so. And that's how it is, but I just wanted to point out that I, I found that, and I also wanted to make sure that we were accounting financially for it correctly.
Yeah, and that I can't answer, that's a Jody question.
So what was the question?
If we're accounting for the liability of the carryover.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jody, you said there was maximum carryover of 10 days.
Right, if you look at the top.
Right, but then I'm looking at non-exempt, and it looks like there's no more than five?
I think that's, they had a smaller amount of vacation time.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're carrying over.
Yeah, even most corporate places where you do have carryover, there's a distinguish between exempt and non-exempt.
I just, just want to double check and ma, make sure that that was an on-purpose thing.
Alright, my next question is on page 27, and it might confuse the way I'm just reading it and not understanding it, but under hiring process and procedures, under, it says personnel request. What does that mean? A personnel request must be made, does that mean to add a position, what does personnel request mean?
That means to, that means to put in that.
Okay. I just wasn't sure what that, um, that, that meant. Oh, and under job postings, all job postings will be posted concurrently on the district website and externally. That's just for non-CBA positions, right? Because CBA positions, it stipulates internally first, for amount of time, then externally. So we're talking just district totally, because I know there's like some things about teachers in here later, so I just want to make sure that that's just, that it's not bumping up against the CBA. I thought so. Some of these are easy, I just wanted to, you know. Page 29, and like I said, when I was comparing one, this one to the old one, some of these came up. So, when leave of absence for teaching staff, number three, upon returning to work, a letter is required. From whom? From the teacher, not from the doctor?
Correct.
Okay, because.
Because this is for a legal absence, like, we have one teacher that is taking a legal absence for a period of a year this next year.
So this is not like a medical leave where you need to get it? Okay, alright, I mean, I don't know if it would be, I mean, as long as HR understands what it is, and the teacher understands what it is when they go out, just like, my question was, from whom? Um, oh, and the other thing, another thing that changed, termination of employment down on number three, and it changed in a couple of spots. The same, the same principle, where it says the billing principal notifies the human resource manager, like of somebody who's terminating, who will notify the superintendent. In the old manual, it said billing principal will notify the superintendent, well, you know, will send the letter of term. Well, you know, will send the letter of term or whatever, there's resignation to the superintendent, why is it not, but why is it going to HR to superintendent rather than? Why was that changed?
It was changed because you now have a, you now have an HR manager, and that's the way that it should, it should.
It should go rather than that, so the superintendent still, it's just, it's just another, yeah, I mean, it does go to him, it's just another step before it gets to the superintendent, okay. Because when, this is the SAU manual, I know we took it from SAU thirty-eight, and they did have an HR department, they had an HR person in SAU thirty-eight. So, um, I mean, unless we changed it when we brought that piece over. I don't know. Um. And I'm sorry, I know people's eyes are blazing over, but if we're going to approve the document, we wanted, I wanted to compare it to the previous one. Um, okay, so yeah, leaving for on page thirty-three, I'm sorry, page thirty-three, leave information. It says you're allowed fifteen sick days, blah, 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 um, and then you're entitled to twenty-five vacation days. Is this like just an example, rather than have like a line there, because that's a different amount, so like this was a non-exempt person getting this letter.
This is an application letter to the SAU staff, so this is what.
Yeah, so if you, so if you were sending it to a non-exempt person, it wouldn't be the fifteen vacation days, you see what I mean?
Correct.
Yeah, does my question make sense? Because there's other spots in here where there's blanks, so you can, you have one choice, but that part is filled in. So, I was just, you know, saying that, because as we were saying, non-exempt and exempt are different, that looks like it's kind of hard coding.
Yeah, and an exempted, a non-exempt employee would get a letter rather than the support staff.
Alright, so maybe the title of this should be changed to exempt SAU staff.
Leave information exempt.
Yeah, or, or applicant letter SAU staff. You know what I mean?
Yep, so maybe there's two letters, one for exempt, one for non-exempt.
Well, well, she said they would get more like a letter of assurance that kind of goes, the same sort of thing that goes to like the support staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is very different numbers though, than what is in the paid time of the PTO and the sick leave, that area. This is the fifteen sick days, but then also three personal days and twenty-five vacation days. The PTO vacation days are at ten and fifteen.
Oh, good catch, because I didn't go that far and get carried.
That's why this is an exempt, and this would be an exempt persons, and, and a, a non-exempt person would get something more like the support staff.
So you're saying these, uh, we, and like I said, I didn't.
This would be like directors.
Well, no, no, what, what I'm saying, and, and to Julia's point, because I didn't go and check every, you know, I didn't go back and, thank you, Julia, I didn't go back and look at it. Make sure it matched up, these are the correct numbers for exempt.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't see that called out anywhere, I just see the non-exempt vacation time called out. I don't see anywhere where it says somebody has twenty-five days plus three personal days plus fifteen sick days.
Where, where is that in, well, if you go back to page, what, thirteen that you were just discussing?
Seventeen is vacation for exempt employees.
Right, so that's why this should be exempt employees, we should change the heading to exempt exempt employees.
Oh, here it says twenty-five vacation days, so they get twenty-five vacation days plus fifteen PTO plus three personal days. Forty-three.
Where does it say the?
Forty-three days a year. That's absurd, I'm sorry.
Where's the three professional, now, now that you say that.
Eight and a half week, eight and a half weeks off a year.
I'm not seeing where the three professional days are listed.
If you look on page thirty-three, under leave, you are allowed fifteen sick days per year, six days will accumulate, three professional days. Three personal days and twenty-five vacation days.
Yeah, what I was saying was I don't see it back in the days off section to compare it with, do you know what I mean?
The one that. Right, yeah, no, I don't, all I see, I don't, in the vacation for exempt employees, it just says you can carry over ten. And it's twenty-five vacation days per year, so, uh, somebody carries over ten days, then they're looking at forty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-five days plus fifteen days plus three days.
Yeah, so, so what we're.
It should be added to.
Okay, so, so, so it's spread, it's spread out, it's spread out in seventeen and eighteen.
Yeah.
Oh, did you guys find it?
Yeah, it's spread out, Gina found it, it's spread out on pages seventeen and eighteen, it just doesn't have the.
Eighteen has the three personal days.
So if they carry over ten days, they, between PTO and vacation time, they get ten weeks off and sick time.
So, so PTO. Hold on, so PTO and vacation are two separate things, and sick time is a third different category?
We don't have PTO.
That's sick time.
Okay, so it's not, so it's sick and vacation.
Correct.
Right, so if they carry ten, it's thirty-five vacation days, fifteen sick days and three personal days, which is ten and a half weeks.
Okay, yeah, so Gina found where that spread out between pages sixteen. Seventeen and eighteen, so that at least tracks, I think is a larger discussion, probably not tonight, unless you want to. About the merits of that, but I think that's maybe part of, I don't know, during budgeting, I mean, that, I don't know, or maybe not. But I think that's, did you agree, Julia, that's kind of a different discussion than.
Yeah, yeah, I was just making for sure for clarification, that's what it is, that is in fact what it's saying, yes.
Yeah, cool, thank you guys for finding where. Thank you, Gina. Um, oh, so page thirty-four, um, the letter for the teacher, just, it says. You must return your contract within seven days of receipt, um, or the offer is canceled. But on page twenty-eight, if you go back to that, it says offer may be rescind, may be rescinded, not that it's outright canceled. So it's, it's a change in language, maybe, and this one's harsher, like it is canceled, also.
This, this, this is what the board had asked for a couple of years ago.
I know, but the two, the two sections don't match, and just one more section, don't, I'm sorry, Anne, but, um, yeah. We're on page twenty-eight, um, here it says, if you don't return your contract within seven days, the offer is canceled. But on page, which is a new tea, is a new teacher, right, because it's, we would like to welcome you, so this is a new teacher. But on page twenty-eight, it says new employee contracts are due back within fifteen days, so those two don't match. Page twenty-eight says new teachers have fifteen days, page thirty days, thirty-four says new teachers have seven days. So, which is it, because they don't match.
Well, it should, it should be seven days, that's what the board decided on a number of years ago.
On page twenty-eight.
On page. Let me go back, I made my notes last night, so let me see.
Hold on, there was a fifteen day somewhere here.
The candidate on job offers, if a candidate fails to accept an offer of employment within seven calendar days, the offer may be rescinded.
There was a job, there was a fifth, hold on, there was a, um. Where did I see that? I did this last night. Maybe it was, maybe I got confused and it was in the old one, thank you. Sorry about that. Alright, wait, now I was flipping my pages back, and now I'm. I'm, I was on thirty-four, but I think because I flipped my pages back, because I have changed it. I did, I flipped my page, we've done this how many times, where we flip our pages wrong, and now all of a sudden it's all messed up. Hold on. I know, I need, April has this trick of using a binder. Oh no, I got a lot of binders, and I should do that. Alright, sorry, because I need to go back. See twenty-eight, thirty-four, hold on. There we go, alright, so I will have to find that later, because I saw fifteen somewhere last night. But maybe my eyes were getting buggy. Um, alright, so I'm sorry, let's go back, because like I said, I flipped my pages wrong, so page twenty-eight. So, the section that says contracts, um, so I do have several questions about that. I, I like, and you know, I would like to maybe go back and see where, where the board voted. That you have to return your contract in seven days, because I don't remember that, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I don't remember that. Um.
This has been the language that we've been using for about eight years.
Yeah, yeah, and it's possible, that's a long time ago, I don't remember, but.
That's your fifteen days is on page twenty-eight, Holly.
Thank you.
All new employee contracts must be returned fifteen days before it's received.
Yes, yeah, here, yes, under contracts, thank you, I knew I saw it somewhere.
Contracts.
Renewals, that's not.
No, it's a, it's, it says all new employee contracts, so if the letter to teachers.
Well, they talk about new employees or new contracts.
All new, it says new employee contracts.
New contracts or new employees?
I don't know, but I have problems with this whole section, so, so maybe this whole section will not survive. Because there's, I have serious problems with it, and that I want to express. But I hadn't read it that way, so, thank you. Um, so, when it says here, all contracts will be ready for distribution with two, within two weeks of renewals being accepted by the board. So, that's like my first thing I want to say is, some years we approve the renewal list in March. Sometimes we approve it in April, the non-renewal deadline is April fifteenth, um, and our board meeting is always just the way the calendar works. Has to be before April fifteenth, because that's how the calendar works, but, so, if we approve. Um, if, if we approve the renewal list in March, and saying all con, putting this in writing, all contracts have to be ready for distribution. Within two weeks of that, that's late March. I've checked with several people, uh, other, other board chairs, who I, who I know from my work in other areas. That most contracts don't go out until closer to the non-renewal deadline be, of April fifteenth, because it really ties the board's hands. For a variety of reasons, if things come up, you're still looking at things, you know, um, so I think. To codify it in writing here, that they need to go out by the end of March, in my mind, is just not acceptable. Um, also, the section about due to privacy and confidentiality issues, contracts should not leave the SAU offices. I know, for example, first of all, contracts are not confidential, you can request that information with a right to know request. So they're not confidential, board members are allowed to take confidential information home, we get it in our packets all the time. Um, the same information is in negotiations, so if the board chair is not trusted to take home contracts to sign them. Which is public information anyway, that same information is involved in negotiations. The negotiating team gets a spreadsheet with everybody's name, degree level, salary, and even more confidential information than that, way more. So, if, if, if we agree to this, then I would submit that negotiations are allowed to take any information home to do their job. Um, and also to say that you need to sit there, make an appointment, sit here and sign seventy-five plus contracts. Like my, like just using myself as an example, I don't, my days off are Saturday or Sunday. So it would take more than a lunch hour to sign seventy-five contracts to sit here for no reason, really. Because they're not confidential, to just sit here and sign them, just to sign them, because we sign them, we have to check them against the list, we find errors, whatever, da-da-da. So, that is my spiel about that, I think this whole section is not necessary. What do you guys think?
So what would you suggest changing it?
Just get rid of the whole thing, we don't, it doesn't need to be, you know, in writing about deadlines for contracts or anything like that. Because on all different spots we have, that it's due back in seven days, so I think this, this whole section, I don't think is necessary. Because if we approve this, it's going to ripple effect to other areas, like the board should not then receive any confidential information in the packets. The negotiators should not be able to take information home, you know, if it's singling out this one thing is confidential, that, and you're not allowed, you're not trusted to take it home. I think it has a bigger impact on other things.
So you're saying everything in here is included some, it, it, it's a piece that are included somewhere else, is covered other places.
Well, not everything, no, this whole, the first paragraph, I think is totally unnecessary, that they have to be out, they have to be ready for distribution. Within two weeks of the renewal being accepted, because there've been times where we've accepted the renewal list, and Gina knows this, in March. And then in April, we have to revisit something, you know, and we have reassignment deadline is in May, so back, and I understand Dr. C's going way back. But I would sign contracts in May and get them out, which I understand is, is later, probably than we would want. April is, you know, I think April sign, do it closer to the non-renewal date, so yeah, I think that first. Well, I think there's a lot of unintended consequences in that first paragraph.
But shouldn't the staff have some type of structure to know what to expect? And that, that's a question, that's a question I'm asking.
Well, my, my thought about that is, is, and I've talked to other board chairs about this, and I've been, my, I've been saying this. Several, five, three years, when we, we get these contracts out earlier and earlier, if you don't receive a non-renewal letter by April fifteenth. You know you're getting a contract, because if you don't receive a non-renewal letter, you've been renewed, you know what I mean? So that's my thought, I'm not saying wait until after the non-renewal deadline, but they, they should have an expectation of. Unless they get a non-renewal letter, they're getting a contract.
Yeah.
Maybe you should read something like they will come out no sooner than two weeks after, so you have that two week window, and then you can put them out a little later.
That's a really good idea.
Okay. So.
Give you some flexibility.
No sooner, so then that way, if we need to revisit in April, as we have had in the past.
So they know that, there's that two week window where you have some deliberation time or whatever you need.
Okay.
If the contracts can't leave this office, how do we pass them out?
Right. I mean, yeah, how, yeah, I mean, we're all bound by the same confidentiality, I mean, the board by law were bound by confidentiality. I mean, I would, I would say that, um, do you guys have something?
Where you are.
Okay, no, that's okay, um, yeah, and, and I would say things that, info that does get out. It's not related to contracts, things that I've heard over the years is not, and contracts are not confidential. Um, so yeah, so, um, what do you guys think about the rest of that sentence?
I like, I like, I like to know sooner than.
I do too.
Yeah, okay. Now, what about where you need to, whomever the chairs, this isn't just me, because, you know, obviously. You know, Sean had Fridays off.
I had Fridays off, and I did it here, and that wasn't a problem for me, but I can see where, well, someone doesn't have the day off, that would be a problem, so I think.
Yeah.
Be for the position, not the person.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, and just speaking from negotiations, I need to have that stuff home, I can't do.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean.
I could have never done it without having that stuff at home to work on.
No, and it's the same information, and then the board, I mean, it's really clear in all the board stuff, that we have. The authority to take confidential information home to do our jobs.
So if you just got rid of the rest of that sentence and the next sentence.
I mean.
And that would work?
And we could keep the due backs one week after issuance, yeah.
So strike.
Yeah, those next two.
The last, okay. The rest of that one, and where the comma is.
Yeah, you don't know me. Yeah, so keep the first with the change that Anne offered, give her the next two, and I keep the do, they are due back, oh, it should be they. They are the, or the contract, I don't know, oh, no. Right, now that I read. The due back date, sorry.
Due back date, one week after issuance. I think that solves that problem.
Yeah, but, but now see the very last se- sentence, all new employee contracts must be returned within fifteen days of receiving them.
Just take that one out.
Okay, because, because that's where Gina read it differently than me, but I can see we should read it both ways. Alright, take that one out. Alright.
Manager, just, we were, have it all side guarded. You were saying keep the seven, ten, the top higher, the job up, or seven, okay.
Yeah.
Because there is a, I'm trying to stay out of it, because I'm not going to be here.
No, no, no.
That historical perspective, I remember specifically an incident at that high school, we were trying to hire a science teacher. And she was dragging her feet, she dragged her feet because she was getting offers in other places, and so we said, we need to have a short turnaround time. Keen High grabbed her, grabbed her up, and we ended up in a pickle, and so I remembered that case, so.
I was the one who grabbed her.
I know you were. I remember.
Wasn't very nice. Karma Wayne, karma.
That's the one that started about six years ago, the, uh, approving the contracts in March.
Yeah, so we did, um. No, yeah, I know, he and I have had several conversations about that, just as. Just in the interest of full disclosure here, Wayne and I, that's the one thing you do not see. Okay, cool, thank you. Yeah, and, um. Okay, now, good, now we're back on where I had slipped too long. So, skip a couple. Okay, I think we're at the last, we're at my last sticky. Thank you. Oh, no, no, not it isn't, it was a note for me, something was sent in about comparing something. So, that's it, okay.
Well, I.
For me, for me, no, 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 for me, that's it for me. Yeah, so, well, God, you could all have millions.
Somebody go. So I, I already, Anne and I did a lot of work on this already, so like, my list was actually longer than your list, but mine was mostly formatting. She took care of it, it's fantastic, it's all great. The one remaining thing that I had is, I thought that we had wanted to review our search committees. Because I know that we had, you know, changed a few things with some of the recent searches that we did. So I thought it would be a good idea to go through them and just make sure this is what we still want to do.
Page one?
Page nine. I had thought, like, for instance, on the superintendent's search. Two members of the school board, two members of community, business administrator, human resources, district principals, district principals. I had thought that the director of curriculum administration should be on that one. For the superintendent's search, because they'd be working closely together.
Okay. Director of curriculum. Did we talk about at any point, um, having more than one teacher? Because there's two community members and only one teacher. Have we talked about that at one point?
Well, I, I, on my notes, I thought that there should be a teacher from each, for the superintendent, a teacher from each building.
Yeah, I think I remember.
Agree with that.
Okay. The one from each building.
Yep.
If we can get them.
Right.
Tried that with one other search, and we only got one person. So, yeah.
And, um, those are my only notes on the superintendent one, and then we. Didn't we make adjustments on the fly for business administrator and director of student services with this past search?
I remember director of student services, we did, but I don't remember what it was.
Because. School principal. Should it be this one principal or both principals?
I don't know, do you remember Wayne? I remember we made, we made it in non-public for that specific search, but I don't remember.
I do not remember, but it seems like you need both principals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, and should that also be a teacher from each building?
I, I think so, if you don't mind a bigger committee. I mean, if you don't end up filling it, I don't see the big harm, but it's not there to start with.
I just feel like the, the, for director of student services, there, um, there could be different needs in each building that, you know what I mean, that would be represented in that search.
Yeah, and I think business administrator, we also changed for this past search to, no, it wasn't, it was technology, we changed to two teachers.
Yeah.
Never mind. Oh, and, and just inconsistency, it says A can still school district principal and A principal, it should be. For business one, not A, and then we're change the other one to.
Do you want the director of student service to re, can still school district principal by, or vice principal? Or vice principal?
What do you guys think?
Well, we only have a vice principal in one building at the moment, so I think it should be the two principals. I mean, if like that was to come around, let's say the middle high school principal, you know, had other duties. And said, hey, could the assistant principal do it? Yeah, that's great. I would, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I think it should be consistent, because we don't have that same assistant position in both buildings.
Well, I mean, you could break it out. HES principal, and then HMHS principal, or assistant principal.
Yeah.
As you have up at the superintendent's, two can still school district principals or assistant principals?
Yeah, that would work.
Yeah, that's kind of understood, the persistent is only at the high, middle high school.
Yeah, I just, I like it spelled out, so. And, and I think.
I think it should be the principal for the superintendent, not the assistant principal.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so if you want to go back, because right now it says or assistant. We can scratch assistant, or just have principals.
I just feel like for that particular position, it should be their direct report, who's going to directly report to the superintendent, which would be the principals.
You guys okay with that?
That's fine, and then we just move that line down to it, towards level director of student services? Yep, that worked for me.
Okay, so scratch or assistant principal for the superintendent, and add or assistant principals to the other two? Or just student services?
Student services.
Okay, just student services.
I don't think it's as crucial for the business administrator position.
Agreed.
You got all that.
That's all I had, I just had the one page.
All right, did, uh, Dana, do you have anything?
I did not. Julia?
Good. I brought up my issues.
Last, yeah, because you two worked on our personnel already, so, yeah, I said last month that I was going to go and compare with you, so, I warned you. All right, so, um, thank you, everybody. So we. Probably put that back on the agenda for next month.
To see other corrections.
Yeah, after it's been updated. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, next up, meeting format. So I know Anne put some information in here, and I know April did a poll through community connection, so. April and Anne, if you'd like, if you would like.
We have it right from you, it's go through and see, I did it as a, I have the. See how many views had been on the. And you can see the, the one that was at the most views was when we were talking about the value of sports and all that.
Masks was the other big one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, it's, uh, it's kind of, um. It hasn't been that, it hasn't been that many lately. In the beginning, there was quite a few, and, um, the, the views have gone down. Except for that anomaly in January, February, we're talking about budgets and sports and. Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll just jump in, because I had had this last month, I did the same thing last month, and talked about it, and the numbers. Here and there, there've been one and two, it looks like people have looked at one or two different ones since last one. But, yeah, that, you know, that we averaged, now granted, because we have some big ones, but we were averaging like forty or so. You know, a month, but, yeah, it has dropped off.
We have three tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Or can I just not see them all, online, anyway?
Well, yeah, and that's today. So if you look, like, I know, I know, some, you know, people will go back and watch it when they're available, because like, if they're.
Right.
Right now, so, yeah, so that's probably where we hit like the ten and twelve and thirteen. And there was an article in the Sentinel the other day about, um, just how things, what things our districts carrying over. That they discovered during the pandemic, and there was, I think it was, I want to say Jaffrey or Conval, I don't know which one. Where one of their administrators talked about, um, how, you know. They, they are getting, you know, a dozen, twenty, whatever, people looking at their YouTube views, summer at the meeting. At the time, summer coming back later, and he said it's, his quote was, you know, so win-win. Because he was, he had lots of times, he would be the only person in the room, back in the old days, when it was all in person. So even getting like a couple of people more invested and knowing what's going on is good, so. I thought that was kind of timely, since we're looking at it tonight, but.
Hey, Ben. Uh, so the survey I did online got twenty-six people that participated. Twenty-one of them were yes for keeping it, five were no. A lot of the. Reasons for keeping it were flexibility, convenience, being able to watch it later, being able to, being. Informed about what's going on, you know, when they can't come to meetings. Some negatives were audio, technical issues, basically, were the, was the biggest, like, what they don't like about it. But, yeah, over, overall, it seems like people, people would like us to keep it. And I personally think we should keep it, because even if it's, even if it's like three more people, it's three more people.
Right.
That are more informed than, than, you know, than not having it.
I think if we're looking at these plans and what the cost is, um, with what, what our needs would be.
Pro or business?
Pro, I would think, I would say we could.
Yeah, we don't need any more than pro.
And for a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
There's nothing.
That's, I just broke it down, it's like thirteen dollars a meeting.
Yeah.
To, to keep people informed, I think it's worth.
I think it's worth it. It's like a.
I do too. I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. It also, you know, it shows, it's transparency.
Right. All right, so do we, um. Need a vote to continue with this, or is it just consensus? What do you guys, what do you think?
I don't think it's in the budget, so I think a vote would be, I mean, if you have the money, but.
Yeah, I mean, either, even.
Hasn't been approved yet in the budget.
Even the school board line, so we spend a hundred and fifty dollars less on the end of the year picnic. You know, because that's, that's where a lot of the school board line goes.
Well, it's not a budget line for what, for the budget that was approved, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So, so.
Like school board expense.
Right, yeah, which is where.
Do we have, do we have a like school board expense, because otherwise that gets. No, I just, because if there's not a like school board expense, and this budget was already approved. There's other things you need to do to order, in order to approve it, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Cool, thank you, Sean. That's. Why we have five.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I, I don't mean to be here, but, 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 I mean.
Yeah, I know.
But there are, but there are.
Look at these.
All right, fine. We all, we all zone in on specific things.
Exactly, that's the beauty of the school board, because we all zone in on something different. All right, yeah, so, so probably a vote to expand it out of the dues and fees, school board expense, fine, however.
Then I will make that motion.
Final second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that, say aye.
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 Oh, so I'm sorry, thank you, Julia.
I figured, I, I just wait until everyone else is done, and then I say it, you'll hear.
No, I'm supposed to call on you, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, um, next to job descriptions, um, uh, Wayne had spoke to me about there were some that were still, needed some work.
Well, we have, uh, Mr. Bogio is not here tonight for a family emergency. He requested that we delay, uh, the social worker, A and B, um, and. I've also had a couple other, but I think those are, those are two that Joe feels. That we should delay, and I. He'd like us to bring those up in June.
Um, are some of these, and you think I know this, because I just went through the whole manual, but some of these, are they, they're also in the manual, right, that we're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we, okay, do we want to just table them all until June? How does that, does that make more sense, since we're somewhere in the morning?
Updates to come during, so. The only thing we're adding to the other ones is, um, a request for, um. Like the parents, education, and all the rest of it, our request from the director of student services. Regarding MSP billing, uh, sometimes people are not doing a billing on a monthly basis, and it's money that we use. We want to make sure that, that, that employee, all of a sudden, please, it just hurt for some reason, or another, for the child, please, the district, for some reason or another, we are losing out on money.
Okay, so, yeah, so that, that is on all the other ones, that's the only thing. So does anybody have any questions about that?
So my only question on that, is there anything in the, uh, in the CBA that talks about filling timelines? Because if there is, then we need to make sure that this, um, blurb that we're putting in doesn't. Doesn't conflict with what's already in the CBA. There's nothing in the CBA? If we're adding something in like that, that's changing, or establishing a timeline for them, don't we need to discuss it with the union, or no?
No, not, not on this, I mean, they, most, I would say ninety. Let's say eighty-five percent of people are already doing this, there's just a few that are not, and. We discovered that, like, we had a payroll leave, and. It cost us about three thousand dollars.
I think, I think the cares, this is already an expectation, that their billing is done by Friday.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, it's part of their job.
It's just putting it in writing, basically.
Yes.
Okay, and, and not trying to raise a hornet's nest, but I wanted to make sure we look at all of it, right? I'm just thinking the similar. You know, it's not exactly the same, but a similar thing with the teachers, when we're talking about grades being in, and that did end up being a negotiation. That was a timeline, there was an expectation, the expectations of being that, most of the timeline, all the time is specified. Is this closely related enough to that, where we should be talking to? Them.
What do you think, Wayne?
And, and that's just a question, I don't know.
That's a good, like, I wasn't with you until you brought that up.
So, yeah, I think, give us a little more time in, in June, uh, because those are legitimate questions. And we want to make sure we're not violating any agreement, and we want to make sure that we have some language, or make sure it doesn't happen. In the future.
One that we will have to look at is the, because it only involves the parent educators, all the rest are not members of any.
Yeah, yeah, first up, CBA, yeah. Any other questions?
We have the E S Y coordinator, sports coach, and robotics coach, is they're all new?
I was gonna say, they're new.
They're new, because we, we're trying to make sure that we have all of the job descriptions up to date.
And that was, uh, my only question was, you know, are these new, because I didn't see any changes on them. On the coach one, my question was, I talked about the athletic code, or athletic code of conduct. It doesn't mention like of an athlete in particular, and should it, or does it not need to?
I think that, that the athletic code of conduct is, um. He's reporting, is, is in the life of an athlete. Sam, Sam, and, um, you know, these were sent to Anne, Sam, and Erica. And they went through them pretty, you know, there's quite a few changes. And Justin went through the robotics coach one, because.
So my question on the robotics coach one is why that particular one was separated, separated from the other stipend positions, like class advisor and stuff like that?
They, they already have job descriptions. This is the one that does not have a job.
Gotcha, okay, all right.
So we're trying to make sure that. That they all have job, we discussed that during negotiations, to make sure that they all get job descriptions.
Where, where is their job descriptions, like the class advisors and stuff, where is that?
Oh. They just, Erica has them in.
Yeah, okay, so, so it's not like how the SAU manual has them all listed, there's no, like, manual that has them, okay.
No.
Okay, that was my question.
In order for them to get the stipend, they have to sign the job description every two years.
So then will the robotics one go with that other pile versus in the manual?
Yes, the robotics one is with the, it's a, it's a position that's been agreed upon.
Right, cool.
Any other questions on the job descriptions?
Um, the coach one, and the coach one, under job goals, it looks like part of the responsibilities was. Pasted into the goal, starting from must possess leadership skills. All the way to the, you know, right below, right above the certification required is exactly.
Must be available to work weekdays during before and after school.
I mean, that's not really a job goal. Those are responsibilities, it just shouldn't used to come out of God's job goals. Because it's the exact same as it is under responsibilities in that section. It looks like it was a copy paste mistake, something.
Probably. When Erica sent this back to me, I didn't really have time.
Yeah.
And then my only other sentence.
It's just for instruction, which just means to develop skills and ability to sell sports.
And the speech language pathologist has an extra page in it, in the heading, just, not by eye.
Any other questions? Tina? Julia, any questions on those?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, so do you want to. Want to table? The social worker and the para. The social worker and the para. Who else is in the? That's the only one that's in the support staff, right? Not the, the speech pathologist, I mean, that, that's in the S A U manual, right? Yeah, so we just need to table the A, B and C. And we can vote on D through I, does that make sense? Alright, so just need to most, those two motions.
So I'll make a motion to, or a motion to table first?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to table A through A, B and C.
Okay, somebody say.
I'll second.
Okay, um, any more discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of tabling A, B and C, say aye.
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 Thank you. And then just the motion to accept D through I.
I'll make a motion to accept D through I, and it should be as amended, right?
Yes, thank you.
As amended.
Oh, second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Right, and all those in favor of accepting D through I as amended, say aye.
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 Thank you. Alright, thank you. Um, alright, next up, the first reading of past, past policies, so, um. April and, and what's been away.
I would just, uh, let the board know that we had a separate meeting last Wednesday just to deal with this as the HASP committee. Um, April can certainly speak to, you know, what we went through, Joe's not here, he's, we have a lot of information as well, but. It basically, uh. Lines up with government guidelines that we have to have in place in order to have a successful audit and we've been doing very well with that. But it seems like every year, uh, they come up with new, uh, I'm not going to say draconian, but unusually. Demanding, uh, expectations and with a threat that, well, we only have so much money and some of you aren't going to meet the mandate. Uh, so we, we work hard to make sure that when the audit comes through. Uh, because we think, and I know you agree, that HASP is extremely important to our community, the more students involved. Most evenings and, uh, you know, we do the morning thing, we have summer, we have just a lot going on with HASP and so we want to make sure we don't lose that funding. Which pays for the whole program, um, and then we have some, you know, title money too that we lose and so. That's, the, the, you know, obviously, any questions you have, but I think Marian wants this fairly soon or.
I think she, it's due by June sometime, right? She needs to hand it off or something, yeah. Yeah.
June thirtieth? Yeah.
No, it's, I don't think it's June thirtieth, I believe it's June nineteenth.
Oh, we should know.
Okay, that's it.
So we have, this is the first reading, does that mean we have that a second reading too? Sure, because I mean, we'll make it.
You don't need to on this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the. Presentation of the HASP policies.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we want to change that to approval of HASP policy? So that's looking back on it, it's not first reading? Alright, uh, so, uh, all those in favor of approving the HASP policies, say aye.
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 Thank you. Alright, um, other business, I have one thing, but we'll start with maybe else says, Gina, do you have anything?
I have a bunch of non-public stuff, but I don't think I have any other, other stuff.
Uh, April?
I do not.
Julia?
All set, thanks.
Okay, um, my only thing was, um, I saw a tweet went out and then was retweeted again, remind people again, um. About no parking on school street, uh, during, um, the games and as several of us commented when we got here that, you know, it's being ignored. And a little kid actually ran out in front of the car in front of me. Um, and I know this isn't every year thing, so thank you guys for sending the tweets, but, um, do we want to, um. Resend, you know, just redate it, it's a little letter that we sent a couple of times asking the police department. To enforce the, uh. Oh, not, what do they call them? The ordinances, thank you, the ordinances, and it's all laid out in the, in the letter, which ordinances?
It was researched.
Yeah, yes, it's been passed, it's been passed from me to Sean.
Back to you.
Back to me, so, yeah.
So the day of that particular game, we did have extra staff out there and I contacted the police department and that day they had one officer on duty. So enforcing an ordinance with one officer on duty, I think we should hand out badges.
It's, it's hard, but they are getting, they're getting more staff on and they've got some people in the academy and.
You know, so we try.
Them to know the schedule?
They, yeah. It does change a little bit, but I did call them ahead of time, so I'm, what I'm saying is.
Yeah, yeah, it's intermassive, we're going to be able to get them off.
So, I mean, I'm totally understanding that, should, for ourselves, make the staff up doing it and then knowing that they're short, but just doing it.
And, and I think we can get staff out there better too, I think it's a problem.
Um, any discussion on that? Julia? Right. Okay, so I'm doing the motion to directly.
I'll make the motion, I wanted them, I'm one of the, I made the motion to direct the chair to send that letter to, it goes into the police or present to the selectmen or.
I have to look at the letter, how it was.
We presented, we presented, selected.
I think we did, yeah, okay.
Do we want to send a letter home to parents? I mean, you said that, I don't know how good it'll be, but.
Um, that's a thought.
Yeah, but. We're just, we're, right now.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, sorry. Thank you guys, thank you. Alright, so Sean made a motion for the chair to send that letter, um.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and April?
Should we send a letter to parents, like?
Yeah, what do you guys think, Anne?
Or, I know we did the, I know the tweet just came out, but like, if maybe we did the.
School messenger.
School messenger, yeah, that's something like that, so it gets to everybody.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the administration could do that, whoever, you know.
So, I don't think we need one to, from the elementary, right?
No, no, I think you.
Well, a district line, because they want, they come and watch.
I'll, I'll take care of that, it's district line.
Okay, cool, thank you, Anne.
Uh, Holly, I have one thing.
Yep.
It's just about the moderator.
Okay.
Um, I had been, um, advertising, advertising, I guess you would say, we have not had anyone, and, um, it was brought to my attention that. Until we have somebody, the district clerk, we sell shirt service moderator, also the one second tool point moderator.
Well, I read that a little bit differently, but I'd like to get an opinion illegal on that. I, I guess it all depends on, you know, how they're determining school meeting, whether the school board meeting or the district meeting. But I read that a little bit differently than, than you, the clerks appointing it first and the school appointing it, so I would like a legal opinion on that.
Yeah, I got this from past moderator.
Yep, that's why, that's why I want to go to legal.
Do you want me to, and I'll email that?
Yep.
So I'll email Matt on that, um. Hold on. Um, yeah, and, and if this is correct, you know, the, the clerks appoint the moderator, you know, just temporarily until the election. Yeah, and, and really, it'll just be mainly for election day.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we want to, um. Advertise it online? Like, I mean, I could put it on community connections.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was on community connections, like, I'm not going to get it, I'm village voice, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I totally missed it.
Yeah.
I'll do another, I'm going to do another posting.
And then I'll just copy it on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Alright, thank you guys, um, anything else? Bill, have any other, okay, thank you. Alright, I need your report.
Well, ma'am chair, you have my report. If you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Jody on her report?
I, I have a question, I have a couple of questions. Um, so is there any, um, do you have any thoughts or any plans on, you had mentioned about the expected loss of thirty-six thousand dollars or was it?
Yeah, it's the, it's the Abbey Group, so, you know, for two years we've had free lunches and, um, we've been reimbursed. In excess of the cost, so we're actually running, um. Ahead this year, I think you see the fund balance is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, we started our year off with fifty-two thousand, so there is, um, there is a positive balance. But we have been notified from the Abbey Group that because of labor costs and increased food costs. The state of our economy right now, they're expecting a loss next year of the thirty-six thousand. Well, I mean, I guess there's, there's two things that I can think of that, that we can do, we either absorb the loss. Or we could try and raise lunch prices. I don't think either one is popular.
No, and I think, I think raising lunch costs are going to raise the uncollected balance.
Which is currently at zero.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I think that will make us have a higher number than what we've had in years past.
Um, you know, and, and the other, the other thing is we can just really keep a sharp eye on it and see what direction we go in. And just look at it on a month-to-month basis to see how it's going. And then take, take action along the way if we need to. It's, it's, I find it interesting that the pendulum just is swinging from one extreme to the other.
Right, right.
Anything else?
I do.
Oh, yeah.
So this is usually the time of year that, um, uh, Tom hates me because I start picking for any. Thoughts or if it's way too early on estimated funds balance.
Yeah.
And now I hate you too.
No, I think that's a, it's a very valid question and it's something that I've been, um. Trying to wrap my arms around, it looks like we will definitely have a positive balance in estimating, and I really don't.
You don't have to.
I don't want to go.
No, no, it's, it's totally acceptable to say it's too early.
It's, it's a little too early for me and I.
Alright, that's all I, I'm good with that.
So we'll, we'll revisit this next month, is what I'm.
And by the way, it took, um, it took myself and Tom about two or three years to get to where we are right now, so.
I mean, I, I think that there will be, there will be, obviously be, we'll be in the positive, I don't know how much. Uh, we are controlling our spending big time, I've already turned down some, some. Purchasing, some people wanted to use some funds and I thought that, well, you know, we can do that next year, so let's not do it now, so we've been doing. Kind of holding line.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, do we have a plan on how we're letting parents know that next year it will be pay and not a free lunch? Like, is there a plan to get ahead of it?
Um, yeah, yeah, I, we're, we're going to have to get ahead of it.
Right.
I, I mean, it's, it's something that we haven't been shy about yet. Um, letting folks know, um, but I, I think we'll probably have to do. The, the normal putting it out on, maybe even on school messenger. Because, because the other part that's really important is we need those folks who might qualify for free and reduce to please sign up.
Yeah.
So one thing that scares me is that the folks who, who have not filled out their free and reduce, you know, it, that free and reduce status carries over for the first month of school. And now that. That will go away, so if they don't have free and reduced now, they haven't filled out their forms for free and reduced now, they will not have free and reduced for the first month of, of the school year.
So they should be filling them out.
They should be filling it out.
Okay.
Now, and, um, Erica's been doing a really good job, I think, with outreach on that. Uh, the new system that they, folks at Abbey Group put in called Titan is, um, allows for online. Applications, they don't have to do it that way, they can do it the other way where Erica comes in, but we really want to make it as easy for, as possible for folks to. Complete those applications and I think. I think it's key, so if anybody's out there listening and you follow that category, please, please. Go online at, or reach out to Erica.
But we can do a community connection, tell us now about it, and I didn't, like, we tweeted out stuff about Titan when it, you know.
When I got the school messenger about it, I really sent it out.
Exactly, yeah, so we can pull that stuff back out and try to, to remind people, we'll make it.
That might make it, you know, make people sign up if they can just do it online, not fill out the form.
Yeah.
We might get more people.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
That'd be great.
As a parent, um, I never fill it out because I'm pretty sure I don't qualify, if, if I don't qualify, should I fill it out anyway?
You know, if you think you're close, I would say absolutely, because.
I don't think I'm close, but I'm just saying.
You know. You know, I guess, I guess it's like trying to get, to try to get student loans, right, and fill it out and see what happens. Um, you know, it's all confidential, uh, only Erica, who is our, who is our free and reduced coordinator, will, will have. Access to any of the information, it's, it's, it's very confidential and we, we really, we really mean that, so I think it folks, um. Even if, if you're not sure, you think you might be close, go for it, fill it out, go for it.
Deb, you look like, were you concurring, you'll think, really, it's okay.
Yeah.
So make sure if you had some of that, that we.
No, no, she's, no. Years ago, that used to come with a letter requesting that every family fill it out, whether or not they felt that they qualified or not.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that was a sense of making it seem like it was something that we were all doing or whether it gave the percentages, but. When my kids were in school, it always gave us an even, you know, please fill out regardless, we always.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just crucial and it's, it's crucial for, in so many, for so many reasons, it's, so much is, is tied to that, so much. Aid coming to the school, money coming into the school, grants, it's so much of it is tied to the numbers of free and reduced lunch that it's critical. For, for, for all our taxpayers.
If I may, I think what the key is to get that information out now because parents are used to, um. They don't have to do anything right now.
Right, right.
Until beginning of year. Because they've been getting the free lunch, if they pre-pandemic were getting the free lunch. They still weren't doing anything until sometimes that thirtieth day of school in the middle of October when Erica would, um, yell hello. So they were still getting the meal, they're going to not be in that practice, so we're going to need to really reach out to those people to say. In September, there are, unless you fill it out in Apple this year, because we had a lot of people fill out apps, I want to say, given, I think we're in decent shape compared to many other.
We, we are.
We really are, we're, we're still in the forty percent range, given, you know, of applications and people who qualify through direct cert, so I think we're. In better shape than many districts, but I think we best get out there and let people know now that.
I know, I didn't know about the first month of school, like, it needs to be filled out now. Versus like when you get your packet and, you know.
So fill it out, that's usually fill it out now so that you're covered in.
No, no. See, that's the key.
Yeah.
If you fill it out now, you still have to fill out another one in the fall.
Okay, so that's.
Okay, so when do you want us to, just because we want to do the.
I think, I think something still needs to grow up, but I think parents need to be aware.
I think they don't need to know. I think it says that you should fill it out now if you haven't filled it out already and then you're going to have to.
Have to that again. That's the honest.
Yeah, okay.
Truth, I mean, either that or they have to fill it as soon as schools, you know, in August.
And I think the other thing you should have to notify is that they're going to start being charged.
Right.
So that whole piece, I think.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Uh, I totally one percent agree with Deb, I think that you need to start sending the notices out now, you're talking about a messaging campaign versus just one or two messages. Um, I think that we're talking about district messaging, so while we have, I'm, I'm going to strongly suggest that we use our communication plan. The communication plan has an inventory of all of our messaging platforms, it has specific, um. Examples of how, when, where, why, how to use them, where the flow goes, I think that you need to coordinate this messaging, this is why you should use the communication plan. I think one hundred percent to Deb's point, you need to start pretty much now, put the idea in their heads and then you get a series of messages. So that it's, it's almost constant in their faces, hey, be aware of this, hey, it's getting closer, hey, now it's here, hey, you got to do it.
Yeah. I like.
Great.
Yep. That reminds me, probably Gina probably does not have our communication plan that we.
I have to update it, I have to update it with Gina, because the last one, the last one was with April, so I can make another update, send it to you.
And then we can try to get it out to everybody, okay, cool. Yeah, because Gina's like, communication plan, it's a fancy, fancy. Sean did a super job on it, so. Alright.
It was critical during COVID, obviously, that we had a very smooth, constant flow of information, Gina, so that's where it kind of came out, Sean did a great job.
Yeah, and it's Sean, so you know it's put together with the graphics and it's very.
I have to, I have to use my degree with something, I don't use it delivering mail.
Exactly. Exactly. Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, oh, does anybody else have any other questions for Joey? Thank you, Joey. Curriculum.
I'm sure you have my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm all, I'm all, I did, I did have a question though. I mean, if you, if, if anybody else has a question, you can go first. Um, and it's like, maybe it's a big question, but I really pace.
I'm ready for that question. Well, I wish I could explain it. I wish I could, but not a surprise. A little bit, it's, it's very unfortunate, but our commissioner sent out a memo at the beginning of last week to, to all districts, letting them know that we would no longer be used, we would not be using pace for accountability. And as I said, my, we didn't join pace for accountability purposes. So, you know, we, we hoped someday we would get there. But we joined it more because we, you know, we, we became a pace district because we felt like performance assessments was really going to get our students to deeper learning practices. So, you know, I, the one thing that I, I put a little quote in my report from him, he talked about that we would still be using the pace, the pace bank, data bank that we have, the live guide that teachers can go to for all the pace tasks that have already been developed. They're still gonna support teachers around performance assessment work because we are still a competency-based state. So you really can't have one without the other, which is, that's why this is unfortunate. But that's just what our commissioners is. So it, it's just, it's unfortunate because the messaging doesn't, is difficult, I think. But I, again, I think that we're in a good place because we put a lot of effort into why performance assessments are important and the work we've done with it. And most schools that I know of are continuing to work. The schools that were in accountability, I think they're gonna have, they've got some work to do, but, but they're gonna have to make some shifts. But we're not, we weren't there. So we're in a little bit of a better place. So unfortunately, that's what I have.
So it doesn't really practically affect us?
No, it doesn't affect us in our practices right now. I mean, what, what it means is that as we were trying to move through those stages to get to that accountability stage, we're not gonna be able to do that now. But the practice of using performance assessments to triangulate our data is very, very important. And so I think we should, that's something that we've been working on and will continue to do as we, as we move forward with competency work.
Okay, that's very, that makes a lot of sense. That's sort of what I was leading into it. Oh, good. Alright, anybody else have any questions for Karen? No? Thank you. Technology, Deb and Jessica. Does anybody have any questions for Deb?
No.
I have one question about the April, you know, before the annual security awareness proficiency. The, so the results, the year-over-year results, so, um, so the, the 26%, and I don't know if I'm gonna say this right. I'm trying to decipher my notes from the other day here, but so the scores that decreased, there's a 25, 6% realized a decrease in their score. That doesn't necessarily, or maybe it doesn't, that's what I mean, that they went from proficient to no longer proficient. They could still be proficient, but just their score decreased.
There was, their score decreased, right. So it, it may have been just as much as 85% to 80%.
Okay.
It may have been 85% to 35%. I mean, it was a hollow.
It's all over the map, okay.
So that's why I'm saying, you know, the, the data may indicate that we, and we could see, I mean, I've collected it. So we can see who might need a little more help in certain areas. I can also see that some of our teachers act like some of our students, no offense, but they rush through it.
Oh, it tells you the time.
How much time they spend on it. And so it's like, hmm, just get this done, get this done. And, you know, so you wonder, does that impact on the score?
Yeah, I would say yes.
That would be my hypothesis.
Yeah.
Alright, that was my only question. So, so you, obviously you know all the details, but yeah, just looking at it, it's like, oh yeah, it couldn't just be like a little drop or a big drop.
And some people really, they want to know. They don't remember the score from last year and they write back to me and say, well, what did I score this last year? Because, you know, teachers being teachers, they want to know how well they're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions for them? Next up, we have principals, elementary.
Karen is Joe right now. It says, like Joe, but she's covering in Joe's absence and she's prepared to answer any question.
Okay, so do they have any questions for Karen? For Joe? Nope, I don't.
Julia?
No, no.
Right.
So easy to do.
Yeah. You should talk, you should be Joe every month. Got off very easily. Um, right, and now I found next up is Ann's report. And Ann is Ann.
I am, I am. I have another date to add to my list of events because Dean Jory, who's from Homeland Security, he did the last security audit. He's coming June 17th. I think at 10:00 AM. Does that sound right to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he usually gives us two hours of time and I'm hoping that IT folks will be there. I know that Sean Lee will be there. He'll give some, some good tips.
Like a board member from search facilities. I seem to remember Jim, he may be talking about this last year, was involved, like he was one of us.
Jim was digging into all that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, and you're welcome to come. That's, I'm putting you on the big list, June 17th. I think it's a Friday show.
Yeah. June 17th.
It is a Friday.
What time is that?
10, 10:00 AM.
17th, 10:00 AM.
Yeah.
But he does it thorough reporting and he'll get the packet, you know, when he's done, he sends us the big multiple page report.
Yeah.
So it's like the next week.
Yeah. So that's the, I'm just gonna put facilities and that's the security audit?
Yeah, Homeland Security.
Nearly to audit. And that's 10:00 AM. And where am I going?
To the high school.
Location. Got it.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, any other questions for Ann? Alright, again. She has a report.
I'm sure you have my report. I'm happy to answer the question.
Any questions for Wayne?
I have a page of questions for Wayne. I would, and I have to add these.
Alright, so let's go down and see if anybody else is gonna let you go last. Gina or April or Julia, any questions for Wayne?
No thanks. I'm sure Sean will cover it. We have to show.
Yeah. Okay, Sean.
Hi, Sean.
Alright, so my very first thing is, is it possible, and it may not be because I think it's a little bit labor intensive, but from that very first list that we got, like the very first one, the one we approved, I think, at the beginning of this year for SRR fund expenditures, is it possible to get a breakdown of what we did end up spending money on, what we didn't end up spending money on, what we might have spent, not as much money as we were thinking, you know, that type of thing, a comparison breakdown? Alright, um, so that was from earlier and then from the actual report here. So you mentioned step increases for, I think it was the inter-interventionist. And my question is, if those are temporary positions created for with SRR funds and they're not positions that were continuing after SRR funds, why are we doing a step increase? Because they're not on any kind of, so.
Not really a step increase. We're just moving them like the, like the, like if we hire a long-term sub at the base rate of the BA position, and that changes every year.
So they're not permanent employees, but they're, we're paying their, as if they, their neighbor is getting a step increase based, then they will get the step increase. But their money is all coming out of their.
So you are, they're not step increases for, because they're not for the unit, but you're using the step increases from the CBA? Because it's the base, but it's the, it's the base.
It's the, it's the same thing that we use for if we have to hire a long-term sub with somebody's out for maternity leave or anything like that. We use the base salary of the BA to figure out what that amount is.
Yeah, and then the next year it goes up.
Correct.
In the CBA. So you're looking at the CBA.
That's what.
That's like, you're looking at the CBA. That's my only question. So it's kind of, it might not be a step going from here to here, but it's the BA bottom steps every, up every year. So it's not a step increase, but it's an increase on the salary schedule. Does that make it any clearer?
So you're proposing a raise.
I'm not doing anything.
Alright, alright. So you're proposing a raise.
So let me, so last month, we brought, we'd actually, the month before, went to the administrative team. They said, yeah, they, they would think that somebody who is currently with us, moving on to the next year, would get as if they were a new person coming in because new people, I'm sure will get more money than new people last year. So it shouldn't probably say step, but we agreed to, as a mid, to recommend it to the board. And so we did, that's in your package last month that I went through and I know there's a lot of stuff there. So you've already approved it, but we could certainly unapprove it if you want.
I mean, I think personally, it's important to retain the people we have. So, I mean, it.
It's coming out of the SRR fund.
Right. Because they're SRR employees essentially at this point, so.
And they have a contract that says, you know, pending grant funding, grant approval.
Right.
And every, and we're reminding them in that contract that the SRR funds are.
Yeah, so otherwise, if we, if we did, it's, somebody who's in a position this year, next year, a new person hired for the same position would be making more money because they would get the new bottom BA. Yeah, so yeah, so maybe the step is the word that's just the wrong word.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Or does that make it better?
I'm not gonna, let's put it this way, I'm not gonna move to undo it, so.
That kind of answers what you asked me.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, um, so it's gonna be one thing here. I want to talk about in public. So the Keene State College books, which, which books are those?
So the Keene State College was that two-year commitment we made and Joe proposed to the admin group, and that was in that package last month, that we, that their books for next year were not included in that original grant. The books for this year were, but we didn't have the money for next year. So he proposed that we add the money to those books and that's it.
Is for the Keene State College people doing the leadership forces?
Yeah.
At some point, are we able to get a list of those people? So we know who's, I think we got one.
We did get one last.
Can we get updated one?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if it's, I'm sure it changed a little bit, so yeah.
Okay. Um, and did we also talk with the, with the, I mean, we talked about a lot of stuff when we talked about the SRR fund before, so this is, I'm just pulling this out of this month's report, so it could be some repeat stuff. We're talking $1,200 more for dance?
So, and that's another elementary proposal that he had budgeted for the NHDI, the dance people to come in and get the kids dancing and, you know, get some exercise during the day. And it is very popular proposal, we do it next year. And he actually, I, that was a question we asked of him on this one, where he said that there was some additional that he was proposing, we have some additional dance toward the end of this year, it probably already happened. That we hadn't budgeted in the answer. So every additional request goes to the board. And we start every quarter with the admin, then it goes to the board, then it goes to the DOE. And everything we proposed last month's okay with the DOE except for the HVAC system is still in negotiations.
Alright, um, was, did we talk about $9,600 for field trips? And was that for this year?
That was for next year.
96%.
No, that's for this year, that's right. So tell, Joe spoke to that. Do you remember him exactly?
Joe spoke to that at the board meeting.
Well, we talked about a lot of things, so I understand, we talked about it. I understand that you were originally gonna, I think, get rid of it. And then I wanted it in because, but I just don't remember that amount of money.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I, I feel like it wasn't, I feel like it wasn't $9,600.
Do you remember?
Oh, yeah, I remember. Because of COVID, Joe didn't put it in the budget. Now it looks like he can do field trips, or that's what he requested for this year.
Okay, but was this what we talked about, was it last month or was it the month before? So we talked about this last month and was it, was it that much? Alright, I just don't remember that much money, but okay, alright. Maybe my entire list here, we've already talked about. Did we talk about interventionist dental?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
This, this is where we can go back and watch the meeting.
I believe the same question went to Joe that we've just asked about field trips. His response was Ann's response. I forgot.
Um, okay, um, how about in the part of the report that it said an extension of the tech plan, a one-year extension? You didn't talk about that last month, did we?
I don't think we did.
Alright, woo, there's one.
But I can answer it and Debbie can throw in if there's anything I missed. So when we looked at a new director of technology coming, rather than have Debbie put together the new tech plan and then leave, that it would be better if the new director of technology, the tech committee, can put together the tech plan. So that was just a push down the road rather than something.
Talked about that in March. I think it was the March meeting, but we did discuss having the new tech director online. So we, we did talk at a board meeting about pushing that out.
No, you approved that. I asked for that approval last fall while I was working on the budget.
Yeah, it's a while ago.
That's the one where we extended it out a year.
Yes, because I wouldn't remember that, just for the reasons that Wayne has.
Alright.
We should go back and look.
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay. Anybody else have any questions for Wayne?
Nope.
Or Wayne? Or do you say no or who?
No, I said no, sorry.
He said for who? I was gonna say, I know, we've been at it for a while, so. I think, you know, we're, we're in the punchy section.
I know, my stomach is growling. I don't have any candy. This is gonna get really ugly for everybody.
You have to watch us from home next year.
I'm hoping you have something better to do.
Run your flip phone in.
Julia, they're making fun of Anthony, Ty, because she has.
I know, I know, I can hear.
Not, not after you said it.
Oh, that's what she said.
Sure, sure. Getting a smartphone, she's gonna tape that for a couple of years.
It's a 3G, what am I gonna do?
My mom, my mom just got rid of her flip phone, so.
We gotta have to upgrade. It'll be okay, I swear, I promise.
Alright, so moving on. Thank you admins for your. Moving on to community reports, our personnel committee. Health and wellness. Gina, I'm sorry, yeah, Gina and Julia.
There was a meeting the other day. I don't remember which day because they're all blended together. But there are plans in place for health there in September of 23.
23, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, 23. Working with the PTA, PTSD and other organizations to, to get that all pulled together. And talk about the challenges from May of 100 miles and some blood pressure checks going on for four weeks. And if they do it every four weeks, they'll get a prize for consistency. April has, is the heart healthy challenge for six weeks. And then they're going to do that right this way with that penny, remember the penny thing?
Oh, yeah. Are we gonna get into that again?
I don't know.
For those of you that don't know, so it would be April and Julia, and we can send you pictures. We, not Sean.
We had a team.
We had our own team.
We did.
And it was Jim and the board broads. Sean did not participate, and we had a lot of fun. So, anyway, cool.
I'm in, I'm down. Sean in the barroom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, and I'll send you guys photos. We have some nifty photos from our time together. We're all bonded. Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, that's all I have. Did I miss anything, Julia?
No, I think that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, finance and budget, nothing. Uh, staff development?
We haven't had our last couple meetings, but I know the book is getting, getting done and the survey to the staff is my answer. Yeah, Pollak's working on getting that all together, sending it up.
Okay, thank you. Legislative and HSBA, I'm flipping through here to try to find my stuff, and I can't find what I printed off, but that's okay, because, so for the legislative piece, right now, they're busy doing committee of conference, so a lot of the bills are still getting worked on, so there's really not a lot to report right now until probably next month. And for NHSBA, we sent out a call for resolutions, and that's what I was just looking for, and I can't find where I have it. But I think the deadline is sometime in July for the delegate assembly in October, so we can talk about that later on. I know we briefly talked about maybe doing some, proposing a resolution along the, you know, the the new law about having to take the civic, the citizenship exam in order to get a diploma. So April and I have been talking about that, so we can bring up, bring some, maybe bring a suggestion to you guys, you know, in in August. All right, ask April?
Um, basically, we worked on the, on the book last meeting, so we have that.
Thank you. So let me, Sean?
Nothing that really affects us so much. There's a lot of a lot of talk and some progress towards focusing on infrastructure in the town, which I personally find really interesting and encouraging, just through the other things that I do in town. So that's been really cool to, you know, be a part of and to watch happen, but nothing that really pertains to us per se.
Facilities, Julia and Sean?
Meeting on Friday.
Yep, cool. Um, community connections. I know April's been sending out a lot of great stuff on the Facebook page, so.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm posting a lot on there, different stuff going around school, so if there's anything, anybody it's stuff going on, I try to see what I can see online and resend it out, but, or what I get in school messengers, whatnot, so if there's anything.
Did you want those wacky Wednesday pictures?
Sure, those sound like fun.
What's a wacky? Those were great.
PTSA sponsored some fun things last week, and Wednesday was the wacky teacher contest, how you dressed.
Oh, the dress. Oh, I did, I posted that. Yeah, because I got the, I weighed. And his baby out there. Yeah, I posted those.
And Sarah Green in her wet suit.
Yes, yeah, it was great. I love those.
It was fun, the kids loved it.
Cool.
Yeah, but anything like that, I'm more than, give it to me.
Great, thank you. Tuition committee, nothing. Behavioral support, Julia and Gina.
We have a meeting on Friday. It's a challenge for me, as most workday meetings are, and a lot of the committees that have a lot of people, but they have been, the last few meetings have been very enlightening. There was talk at one point, but I haven't heard back about bringing, I can't think of his name, and yeah, but I haven't heard anything further on that, so I don't know if anybody else has gotten any additional information on that, but there is a meeting this Friday morning.
I'm gonna try very hard to be there.
What?
I'm gonna try very hard to be there.
Yeah, I have a huge project in Connecticut wrapping up on Friday, so I am not optimistic, but I have already sent that response. Nine thirty is a hard time.
Yeah.
Nine thirty, like in the morning. Oh, wow, yeah, that is, that is rough, yeah.
It's a hard time to make a meeting during the workday.
Yeah, maybe you guys, I mean, it's up to you, you know. Obviously.
We'll discuss.
Yeah.
Because it's an important one. Great, thank you, guys, and thank you for making the time to get there when you can. Joint loss, April?
My first meeting was our last meeting of the year, so it was great. And we'll pick up again next year.
All right, thank you. All right, citizen comments, there's no citizens here, and if you want, we have a couple citizens on there.
Antonia, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Bill, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Jess, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so we just need a motion to go in on public.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Go, Paul?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Wayne, we need.
The recording.